All right, all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of United States of America. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you everybody for coming. Quick change to the agenda. The superintendent contract extension has been pulled from tonight's agenda. So that means no public comment on agenda items or at the end of the meeting on that topic. So right now, we open up the public comments for agenda items only. So this is, all speakers will identify themselves, a maximum of 30-minute periods, limited to three minutes per speaker. No district employee or student may be commented upon or identified by name or situation. Questions asked by the public will be referenced to the appropriate staff member for reply at a later date or time. All questions regarding investigations will refer to the superintendent for consideration at a later response. All written statements shall be given to the district clerk.
All right, thank you. My name is Gary Salmon. Good evening, esteemed members of the Board, fellow parents, educators, and guests. I stand before you today, not just in my capacity as an entrepreneur and a CEO, but primarily as a parent of two wonderful children, and I'm deeply invested in the educational future of our children in this district, like many of you are here. We're at a critical juncture.
Sorry, hold on, is this, this is regarding one of the agenda items?
Yeah, I think that's what you told me to do, right?
Yeah, which one?
The global citizenship, is that on the agenda?
Yeah.
Okay. We're at a critical juncture where the decisions we make today will profoundly impact not only our children's future, but also the overall well-being and the competitiveness of our community and nation. I've been living in Westchester County for 50 years and Somers for 27 years. I decided to raise a family here because of the amazing sense of community and support I saw from so many people. Until recently, I truly believe that Somers offered almost everything a family could want, minus the downtown, which we all agree, right? But now witnessing the injection of politics into our educational system, of which I completely disagree with. Instead of putting focus on our children at a local level and teaching them what it means to be a good, caring member of the community, the superintendent is pivoting to supporting initiatives like global citizenship, which takes away from the purpose of what they came to school for, which in my mind is academic excellence. It's my understanding that global citizenship is a pillar of the IB program. The last I checked, which was this morning, the New York State Education Department website appears to show that Somers is just average in Westchester County. In fact, we ranked 24th out of 40. I'm not okay with average. Is anyone in this room okay with average?
Please direct the board.
Okay, board, are you okay with average?
Keep going.
Okay, you just, so why are we focusing our attention on spending dollars on programs that will not change the, change or impact our children? In my experience, this is just feel-good measures that provides no actionable or measurable data supported. Our district is currently at a crossroads, performing at an average level scholastically. While being average might be acceptable to some, it does not reflect the potential and ambitions that I believe our community embodies. We live in a rapidly evolving world where the demands of the future are not just about what you know, but how you apply that knowledge creatively and innovatively. To prepare our children for this future, we must prioritize our educational focus and resources towards strengthening foundational subjects like math, reading, science, and engineering. These subjects are not merely academic disciplines, they are the bedrock of critical thinking and problem-solving skills. Math and reading form up-
Thirty seconds.
Thirty seconds?
Thirty seconds.
Okay. Communicating effectively, science and engineering are the drivers of innovation, offering students the chance to engage in hands-on inquiry-based manner, fostering a spirit of curiosity and resilience. However, amidst these crucial subjects, there's a proposal on the table to allocate funding for the IB program. While the intentions behind this program may be commendable, aiming to cultivate awareness and understanding of global issues, we must scrutinize the allocation of our limited resources. Here are my questions and concerns. We need to be funding academics and not spending money on the IB program. This program requires teachers to be re-taught on how to teach and pushes teachers to not be classroom-facing, instead giving students projects to complete. We need to fund reading specialists who contribute to the core education of students who may not be-
Time is up.
Okay?
Thank you.
Can I submit this for your review?
Yes, please.
Yes.
Hi, my name's Kim Guillo. I have three girls that have, two of them attend at the school and one is currently here. I won't name them. I'm gonna pick up where you left off. So my, my whole concept was about, my whole question and my issues are with the IB program itself. I attended the last Board of Ed meeting, stayed for two and a half hours and listened to the whole budget. I would like to know, since the beginning, when IB was started eight years ago, year to date, how much has been spent on the IB program? I feel the IB program should have its own budget, should be voted on, should have their own line items. If you're not gonna have it separate, let everybody know what is being spent and where the money is going. Because I feel like it has been, it's been baked into the budget that I don't see anywhere where it is. No one mentioned it in the budget where IB is coming from, the training, whatever, you know, you got, send these teachers away to different states during the summer to get trained, what does that cost? What does it cost? They're getting paid for that, the time they're there. It seems like it's gotten so out of control and one issue I have is how many kids really are benefiting from this? How many kids are graduating with an IB diploma? It's a minimal, it's, it is definitely not reaching every child in the school. And, you know, everybody cries about, you know, wanting to be equitable, that everybody benefits. This isn't something that everyone benefits. I feel that he had said, there's so many places that money can be spent. And yes, exactly what you said, the rankings, our school is not ranking well. So if it's not ranking well, then why wouldn't you pivot to what would bring up the rankings? IB is not the answer. It does not benefit the most of the children. I, I don't know why anyone isn't looking at that, you know, to have 10 kids stand up and get an IB diploma out of 230, 240 kids, does not seem that's money well spent. Let me see what else I wanted to say.
So again, this is on global citizenship or the-
Well, it's all tied, global citizenship is still tied to the IB program. I didn't get to speak last week, last time, because you guys did public comments and the weather was hard. So I'm here tonight, and I have a right to be here and to say what I'm saying. I would love to know what the cost is breakdown, for the cost per student, is it really worth it? I would love to have a lot more transparency. I feel like it has not been transparent since the day it started-
Thirty seconds.
-year to date. I don't want an email to me, I don't want an answer sent to me, I'm not sending you an email. I would like you to put it up on the screen, as you put the budget up on the screen, the whole IB program should be explained, from beginning to end. Another thing, it was about the ads that were ran, that were run in the Somers record for IB. I don't understand why our schools, a public school, would be doing that. That seems to be something that a private school would be doing. The cost of running those ads, is it worth it? What did you get from it? You guys send newsletters every Friday, there's always emails, there's better ways that you could have spent that money.
Time is up.
Okay, well, let someone else pick up.
Thank you. All right, if there's no other comments on that, we'll move over to the central office report, onto global citizenship.
I sent an email earlier, just asking some questions regarding the IB program. I appreciate the deck that was sent out, but it would be great, okay, it would be great if we could get some detailed information, how many students per year have graduated with an IB diploma? Do we have any data, how many of those graduates attended universities that accepted the IB as college credit? I understand it can be up to 30. If we could find out the average amount of credits accepted, I'm also wondering if there's any comparable data between graduation credit details for students who focused on AP and embedded honors as opposed to IB after graduation. It would be great if you could add that as well to the presentation, because that's an important data that you're missing. There's a lot of information, how many students are participating, but not the breakout of afterwards. And maybe I missed it, if I did, point it out, please. And in regards to what a few mentioned regarding state tests, well, our scores, if you look at New York State testing, and I know in the past we've spoken about why we are rated so low within certain publications, but if you look at New York State testing, side by side, you can look at Yorktown, Katona, and they are all higher-rated scores for third, fourth, fifth, sixth in New York State testing. So if you could take a look at that, it would be appreciated so that you can see exactly where we are in the district and be able to focus some funds towards our children learning.
All right, now we'll move on to central office report, we'll go on with global citizenship.
So as Chris gets plugged in here, he'll go ahead and get our display ready, and Ms. Comerford from the Learning Office is going ahead and walking us through, hopefully the board can see that. I know we have a little bit of a different setup to see me, but if you've logged into your space there, as well as the public content, we can all see this pillar of, of the elements of excellence, so. Thank you, Ms. Comerford.
Sure.
How we doing, Chris?
I don't know.
I can't see.
Bring it up, bring it down a little more, just down a little.
Keep it going. Just, just get, that's fine.
No, the lighting, turn the lights down, it's too bright on the screen.
In the back.
Now give us some light.
Chris, if you could go to page 40. So for over, so for over 10 years, one of the elements of excellence in Somers Central School District has been a focus on global citizenship. SCSD will ensure a sense of responsibility, belonging, and acceptance in all students, and foster respectful understanding of broader perspectives. This has been an element of excellence for years, and last year, Dr. Blanch engaged all stakeholders, including students, teachers, administrators, parents, community members, and the Board of Education, in re-envisioning our mission, vision, and collective commitments for Somers Central School District. And global citizenship remained one of the elements of excellence. Part of those stakeholder conversations were asking stakeholder groups what their aspirations for the Somers Central School District were in relationship to responsibility, belonging, acceptance, and upholding that element of excellence. So some of the aspirations are shared in our, in our publication of the elements of excellence. Some of those were working locally to make a global impact, being responsible to each other and to the planet. Some of these are, these are some of the examples on how this year Somers has put those aspirations into action throughout the district. For example, here, I know it's hard to see because of the screen, but we have our choice projects at the middle school level, the community project, and also the projects in eighth grade where some students chose, there's more voice and choice at the secondary level to examine water problems in South Sudan and brainstorm solutions. We have our third annual Veterans Brunch going on at Somers High School, as well as Constitution Day K-12 throughout the district, and we have SIS students making blankets to provide to students, to youth who are ill or not feeling well. And of course, we have our Day of Service at Primrose School. Other aspirations demonstrate mutual respect for a diverse school community, right? K-12, all of our students engage in Inclusive Schools Week, in which they engage in activities that are meant to focus on belonging and working, what actions can be taken to make everyone feel as they belong in our school community, facilitating student celebrations at family traditions and cultural heritage, bringing together, educating ourselves and in each other about other cultures and that exist in our community and beyond, and celebrating those, those cultures. Of course, this year at Somers Middle School, Chris, if you wouldn't mind playing that video of the Somers mentors, the middle school implemented a mentoring program that is, has eighth graders working with sixth graders to increase a sense of belonging here at Somers Middle School.
Every Thursday, eighth graders go into the block two, which is after our lunch period or recess, and we talk to the sixth graders about like, how's our week, how's school, how are their teachers, their friends?
The first day, they would, they came to recess with us and lunch, and I found that really nice. An activity we did with the eighth graders was, a couple weeks ago, we did karaoke. The eighth graders were being really nice and like, not like discouraging anybody. It feels really good, because you know someone is gonna help you through it.
Coming together. The jump from being in fifth grade and like SIS to middle school, like, it's challenging, like, it's difficult. It's like, us as eighth graders being there to like, help them through it, I think it'll just really make their whole like, middle school experience like mindset better.
Really allows like sixth graders to like meet, like not, I wouldn't say like get new people, like older than them to help them like find their way through middle school, allowing them to, I guess, discover who they are more.
I think like, the sense of belonging in the school is like great, like, and with this mentor program, it's like better, because like, it just kind of brings the grades together more.
Yeah, like everyone's coming together, like that's what the mentor program is doing. It's like, it's giving us a sense of like community, and it's not like letting the grades be as divided as they were before, like the mentor program.
I agree with that, because like, some sixth graders know the eighth graders as like the older, mean kids, but like really, they're just like the same group, just older, and it feels really good to like get together.
Thank you. The International Baccalaureate Program in Somers, the International Baccalaureate is an internationally recognized educational framework that follows the New York State standards and, and represents what is, how and what is, how teachers teach and students learn. And one of the founding principles like, that aligned with Somers Central School District's mission, vision, and collective commitments was the idea of preparing students to be global citizens in this world. And so I think we know that the Somers High School is in its sixth year of IB diploma program implementation. The middle school was recognized as a six-through-eight accredited NYPD school, so all students in grades six through eight will benefit from an aligned skills-based curriculum. And our ninth and 10th, our ninth and 10th grade at Somers High School is applying for authorization this year. The middle, the elementary buildings are exploring through committing and engaging all stakeholders in the possibility of expanding primaries program, and in the beginning stages of thinking about what a career, if a career program could benefit the students of Somers High School. Last year, students engaged in a, in an engagement survey, a survey asking students to self-report on their engagement, affective, behavioral, and cognitive. It's important to understand, it's important for us to understand how students feel when they're in our schools, and what type, and how that relates to their engagement. So for affective engagement, 91% of students reported that they feel like they belong in their school, 90% feel safe in their school. I like, 91%, they like most of the teachers, and 88%, most of my teachers care about how I'm doing. For behavioral, it's, it's a, it's, it's a miracle, 100% of all students treat their classmates with respect, treat their teachers with respect, and follow school rules. And while this is self-reporting, and I think we can all think of instances where that may not be 100%, the reality is our kids are awesome, and very close to 100% do do all of those things and do them well. Finally, cognitive engagement, 95% of students report they are getting a good education, 97 that they think it's important to attend school every day, and 98% say they try their best in school. And finally, from the class of 2022, I believe this is a typo here on this one, so please be aware of that, from the class of 22, 2022, 95% of those students who went on to four-year colleges returned for year two. And then finally, the data we share often, 71% of students last year took at least, graduating seniors took at least one AP or IB class during their experience at Somers High School. 90% went on to a two- or four-year college, and 10% explored career education, workforce, or gap years, or military. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Claire. And we'll just go ahead, I guess, and get into the next piece here, so we're gonna drop into the 21st Century Knowledge and Skills media update. Again, I think Liz is gonna go ahead and align on this one, so, and Claire might join as well. So Chris, are we all set to go? Thank you, sir. Thank you, Liz.
Thank you so much. And tonight, we will take a look twofold on our student performance fall to winter in the areas of ELA and math, as well as an overview of our professional learning, particularly in regard to ELA and our next steps. So first tonight, we will take a look at our fall to winter progress in English Language Arts, as measured by the Renaissance Star Reading Assessment. Remembering back from our earlier conversations, we're always striving to be at least 80% of our students either meeting or exceeding, or pushing beyond that 80% of our students performing at or above grade-level benchmark. And that 80% goal shows that programmatically, students are responding to tier-one curriculum, and professional learning is then offered to support continued growth for both instructional practices and student learning. When we find, though, that overall performance of those meeting or exceeding the grade-level benchmark is below the 80% for an extended period of time, that's when we shift the learning, and we look programmatically, and we look at elements in curriculum and learning which may need adjustment, and we speak more to the professional learning, and we'll talk more about that tonight as we talk about our professional learning with PLC Associates for our reading work. So this is our updated star reading performance data for our exiting grades, second, fifth, and eighth. As you can see, growth in Primrose for our second graders, moving from 59% of students meeting or exceeding grade-level benchmark in the fall to 81% this winter. And to SIS, fifth-grade performance moving from 71% to 74% of students meeting or exceeding grade level.
In Somers Middle School, as you can see, eighth-grade students started the year lower than we would have liked in the fall, with 50 and 8% reaching proficiency. However, the steady growth of 10% shows the needle's moving, and we recognize that there's still more work to do. This is an example of data that spurs us to reconsider programs, professional learning, and resources to ensure that teachers are equipped to meet the needs of the students.
And now we will shift and take a moment to look at star math performance and progress across the schools. So beginning in second grade, noting the growth from 62% of students meeting or exceeding the grade level on star math in the fall to 86% this winter, and fifth grade, the growth of 80 to 89% of students meeting or exceeding benchmark fall to winter.
We also see growth in math scores for eighth graders, who started the year with 76 reaching proficiency and 79 reaching proficiency in the winter. We do anticipate these scores continue to increase throughout the spring.
So an exciting piece in our professional learning in the area of math is that our regional, Putnam Northern Westchester BOCES has brought on a regional math and data consultant to support our consortium schools. Her name is Anshula Sobrin, and this is the first full year of her role at BOCES. In that time, she's consulted or worked with about 50 different schools within our region. We were excited to welcome Anshula to our elementary faculties this past Professional Learning Day. She's someone that can support us in a number of different ways, from reviewing math programming to reflecting on student data and guiding teachers on building best math instructional practices and learning experiences for students. So we're excited, looking forward to see that partnership grow over the next school We're gonna shift back to ELA for now. We wanted a chance to go back in our performance data and give a bit of a historical look at star reading performance across grades two, five, and eight. Where in math, we typically see students meeting or exceeding the grade-level performance on star math, we do see more fluctuation in ELA. This star reading data that's here dates back to 2016, where you can see typically in grades two and five, the percent of students meeting or exceeding that grade-level benchmark was between anywhere from 79% to 84% by the end of the school year. And we had the spring of 2020, COVID closure, of course, so we do not have a data set for that time, that spring. But post-COVID, spring 2021, and moving years out from there, we've been working to get back to those year-end gains. Primrose and SIS are definitely working back to this place this winter, with of course 81% of the second graders and 74% of the fifth graders, so we are back on the rise
As we mentioned earlier, when we see a consistent pattern of less than 80% of students reaching proficiency, we revisit programs, professional learning, and resources, so that students are equipped to effectively support students. SMS has seen steady star scores pre and post-COVID, and is working to address the needs of the student by focusing on content literacy, realigning curriculum, engaging in professional learning, and focus, professional learning focused on the science of reading, so that we see that the growth we see in other grades continues through the eighth, through eighth grade and beyond. And that will, we'll talk about the work we're doing with our consultants and literacy specialists to address that.
And just to look at math for a moment, in star math, the performance pre-COVID was in that 88 to 90% range of second graders and 79 to 84% of fifth graders meeting or exceeding the benchmark. And once again, no data for that spring, spring closure of 2020, but we see that second and fifth grade performance is growing again post-COVID, back in the 80s. So we're on track this year to see our students follow suit, with the percent of students already in, in high 80s meter, meeting or exceeding, excuse me, the benchmark.
As you can see, Somers Middle School scores have been strong historically, and you'll note that aside from the one-year post-COVID dip, they're stronger than pre-COVID scores. This can be attributed to focused work of the team, professional learning, and new resources such as IXL and Big Ideas that help teachers more effectively support the students.
Sorry, I had a quick question. I see that, maybe I missed it. I see the percentage of students at or above benchmark, the level of benchmark, second, fifth, and eighth, what about the rest of the grades?
We share out our exiting grades, we do have that information at the building level, but for our SMART goals and success plans, these are the culminating grades that we track along the way.
So you just-
We do have that information if needed, yes.
You just picked second, fifth, and eighth?
They're the exiting grades, it's a culmination of everyone's work leading up, and to the students moving on as they transition to the next level, which is why we highlight that grade level.
But the other information's available?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So now we will focus on the professional learning a bit, in the area of reading. We are coming now to the spring of our first year and partnering with our reading consultants from PLC Associates, and we're looking ahead also to next year. As I mentioned in prior meetings, our professional learning on reading really grew legs beginning last spring, with our K-8 Committee of Teachers coming together as a reading review team to reflect on programming, practices, student performance. At that time, we also collected needs specific to each building, and this information was gathered and used to inform that partnership we now have with PLC Associates and their consultants. So over this fall and winter, this school year, our three consultants became members of the teams across the three buildings, Primrose, SIS, and the middle school, and they worked to create consistency in the foundational understandings of the science of reading research. They partnered to model science of reading best practices for both explicit skills-based instruction, as well as how to use, utilize the reading block to build knowledge, language, and vocabulary, highlighting those certain nuances that change developmentally across the grades K through eight. So our consultants also helped to build an understanding of the components that make high-quality literacy curriculum, and they provided some examples for us. So an area of strength that was noted this fall is our K-3 approaches for explicit instruction, both in phonemic awareness and phonics. We have in place the Hegarty Program for phonemic awareness in K-2 and foundations through grades K through three. But even with those pieces in place, we've also incorporated U-Fly phonics material for small group and- we've also incorporated UFLY phonics material for small group instruction. UFLY phonics is out of the research of the University of Florida Literacy Initiative, and it's highly regarded in the field of reading research. So, we will continue to work with our K-8 literacy team to maximize those materials and how they can be best used. Also, this winter, New York State Ed released seven literacy briefs that provided guidance on science of reading implementation across the grades. And we had a team of administrators and teachers attend a statewide webinar on the briefs that was facilitated by State Ed. And during the webinar, it was explained that by September of 2025, that all New York districts must show that their literacy practices are aligned to the science of reading. It was very interesting to hear the questions and the comments that, that different regions in our state were posing in the forum. Some of the questions were, "How do we get started on professional learning for this topic?" So, it was great to have a sense that our work now seems to be ahead of others in this area, and that it's headed in the correct direction. So, this spring, our consultants will continue to model and coach teachers on best practices at the K-five level. And we are also beginning to explore new materials to support the other side or the other strand of the reading rope, known as that knowledge, language, vocabulary-building portion of Scarborough's Reading Rope. As Claire and I mentioned earlier, when we don't see that percentage of students meeting or exceeding the grade level expectations over a period of time, that's when we start to look at things programmatically. And then, at the six, eight level, we will also continue that curriculum alignment in ELA, and as well as offering instructional support strategies for content area teachers who may not be delivering the ELA, but it's important for them to also support the literacy practices to build vocabulary, background knowledge, so that there's consistency across subject areas. So, looking ahead to next year, our consultants are on board to help guide us through implementation of new materials, to continue to be onsite and to coach, and to make sure that the materials are used effectively. This will also further, they will further the work with service providers, our AIS providers, to create and strengthen the connection between what's happening in the AIS setting to the general curriculum that's being delivered. So, lots of good work in motion there. Thank you.
Finally, at Somers High School, this chart shows the percentage of graduating seniors in a given year who took at least one AP or IB course during their experience at Somers High School. This year, Somers High School set their goal to increase this number to 74% of graduating seniors. We can see that this chart shows that in 2017, this is the year before IB was introduced to Somers High School, 54% of graduating seniors took at least one AP class during their, during their high school career. Aside from the COVID years, we see an increase of this number. And this year, we reach seven, we plan to reach 74% of seniors engaging in one or more AP or IB course throughout their high school experience. This increase in enrollment can be attributed to increased course offerings, the design of embedded honors, which exposes students to AP and IB-like learning and assessment, so that they can determine which they prefer, professional learning opportunities, guided open course selection, and the supports available to all students, like the Academic Support Center and the Writing Center.
Claire, quick question. On the IB stuff, one of the things that keeps coming up, the IB classes, colleges and universities do accept some IB classes for college credits, correct?
They do. So, IB assessments are graded on a scale of one through seven. For SL, standard-level courses, the cutoff for acceptance of colleges is a three. For higher-level or HL courses, the cutoff for acceptance from colleges is a four score on those. We've heard reports of students who receive credit even when not taking the assessment. So, we do have that information. We'll make sure that we share that again, so that there's a broad understanding throughout the community how IB is regarded by colleges and universities throughout the country and the world.
Right. So, offering a breadth of both AP and IB has offered, you know, students more opportunities to gain the credits and hopefully, you know, cost savings and get into actually, you know, more universities.
So, yes. We certainly have students who have skipped a whole year because of their IB experience at Somers High School. And even if students are not graduating with a diploma program, which is, it's a completely separate diploma in addition to a New York State Regents diploma, that is an equivalent of taking 11, at least 11 AP exams throughout the course of the school. That's not something we expect all students to do. But we do have multiple course offerings in which hundreds of Somers High School students engage in certificate courses and can earn college credit once they graduate, depending on their performance on the assessments.
Great. Thank you.
Is it, is it accurate that colleges, most colleges take more AP classes for college credit than IB?
I absolutely could not confirm or deny that. And we have a very strong and robust AP program.
Great. Of the percentages there, do you have a number of the people who've taken the courses that have actually, of that, like, 71, 74, the last two years, that have gotten the college credit, that have passed the exam?
Do I have it on me right now?
No, I just, if you can provide that later, if there's, is it above 50% of the, you know, if you have some--
We can look into that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Claire.
Thanks, Liz. Thank you, Claire.
All right. Onto Board Action. We're going to the personal consent agenda. Let it be resolved that the Board of Education, upon recommendation of Superintendent Schools, hereby approves the attached personnel agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
If it'd be all right, just before the board vote, I just want to recognize this evening, we have two of our new administrative colleagues in the audience. So, we have Brian Carroll. He'll be our new Assistant Principal. Thank you, Brian. He'll be filling in at the high school. And back to your feet. And then, just in the aisle seat there, we have Kristin Muchachary. Oh. And Kristin is joining us here at the middle school as our Assistant Principal. Thank you so much for coming this evening. I appreciate it greatly. Thank you.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Stand, objections? All right. Here we go into the business consent agenda. Let it be resolved that the Board of Education, upon recommendation of Superintendent Schools, hereby approves the attached business agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions on it?
The energy, energy savings.
Yeah, just locked in our supply rate for an additional year.
And that's lower, right? It's lower than the last.
Lower than the last time we locked in. Yep.
Great. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Stand, objections? All right. Now, we go on to the attendance at a conference. Let it be, let it be resolved, the Board of Education, Somers Central School does hereby approve the request from the Board of Education for Heidi Camburi to attend the Westchester Putnam School Board Association workshop, the public process of development curriculum on March 18th at a cost of $35.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Stand, objections? All right. Now, we move on to public comments. All speakers are promptly identified. Yep. All speakers are promptly identified themselves. A maximum of 30-minute period, limited to three minutes per speaker. No district employee or student may be commented upon or identified by name or situation. Questions asked by the public will be referred to the appropriate staff for reply at a later date and time. Questions requiring investigations will be referred to the superintendent for consideration and later response. All written statements shall be given to the district clerk.
I can speak? Hi, my name is Paulina Berg. My child is in high school. I'm one of thousands' parents in the neighborhood who receives occasionally, like, few occasions, actually, messages from our children during the school about, "Mom, what's going on? We're on lockdown." "Mom, what's happening?" "We don't know. It's not a drill." I work three hours away from school. So, happens once, and then an hour, two hours later, we get email from administration that, "Sorry, it was accident." One accident? Okay. Second accident? Not okay, but okay. Happened a few times already. How do we address that? I think it's a huge failure of administration to deal with it, and there is no excuse. Kids go crazy, parents go crazy, teachers, I feel really bad for teachers because they panic. In the beginning, there was panicking. I heard after that, they say, "Your parents should call school and complain." Unacceptable. Another failure. Please address this to us, so we know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Rochelle Knight. As a taxpayer in the community, my children have graduated elsewhere, so I'm not too familiar with the IB program. But I think you do a disservice to the people here in the community by not listening to the stories of the parents whose children have just recently graduated, have applied to the colleges, and know exactly what the colleges accept and don't accept. Listening to people who are promoting it in the district is different than listening to the children who are actually applying to the colleges and can tell you the stories of what's accepted and not accepted. You should give everybody a chance to talk, to tell their story. And I think people get angry because they don't feel heard, and the limitations of what everybody's allowed to say. But they should be able to tell the story of their child that just graduated, that just applied, that just got accepted, that got denied for their IB credits, whatever it is. You should listen. I've also heard a lot of lockdowns about somebody accidentally set off the shooter in the school code. How does this happen in this world of technology? That over and over, you're having accidental lockdowns. Not only will you promote apathy to the children who will no longer pay so much attention when it happens, you promote apathy again to the teachers, you promote panic, something with all of the, the law enforcement, all the minds that we have here, how are you accidentally locking down the school? That's the question. Shame on you for it happening once, twice, three times. It's happened a lot. And from what I understand, what's, what's been done about it? So, I think people deserve to be heard. You should do these things. And this, this animosity that for some reason, you don't want to hear the parents, you promote anger in the community. And, and I've noticed while we're here and talking, you're not taking notes, you're using your calculator, Mr. Superintendent, and you're--
Please don't address anyone on the board right now. He's taking notes.
People on the dais are writing, using a calculator. That's not paying attention to what people are saying here. People deserve to be heard, and that, again, promotes animosity amongst the people. We all came to hear, and everybody wants to be paid attention to. Thank you.
Good evening. Tara Moret. I have four children, two of them just recently graduated in the last couple of years, and I have two that, one's in the middle school and one's in high school as well. I just wanted to mimic some of the things that people have said here. And one of the first things, just in watching the presentation, one of the things as a parent who has some up-and-coming children that are not yet in the, the place where they're starting to apply for colleges, 80% of children being at grade level is not acceptable. It's just not. I understand that's where we're striving to, but the fact that we have kids that are exiting eighth grade, which is, seems to be a little bit more of the challenge, to go into high school to prepare themselves to even take IB or AP classes, and they're at, you know, below 80% going into a high school year, when those are the grades that potentially are going to count towards going to college. We need to focus more on the basics. Some people have said that before. You know, why are our children not performing the way that they need to be performing and finding the academic programs that can support our children, so that they can be prepared for a successful future? With regards to children going off to college and applying for colleges, I can tell you, both of my children that went off to college, great students, participated in both IB and AP classes. I can tell you that rigor is extremely important, you know, and having the capability for our students to have increased rigor year after year after year is what gets them into very good schools. And I have specifically been told by multiple schools that we do not even offer as many AP classes as other, other high schools across the country. And our limiting the number of, say, AP classes that we're offering and limiting the amount of rigor that our children can participate in is a problem for us in this district. Because we are compared to other districts, especially within Westchester, and how we compete against those when they're looking at our children against other people. It's not like there's five, five students from this school that can go to Michigan and five schools from another school can go to Michigan. They're competing against each other. And what we look at is rigor and what the classes that our children are able to take is extremely important. And I will tell you, from firsthand experience, you can listen to me or not, IB classes are not widely accepted. Yes, you can have, you know, credit, and you show that you take your IB classes, but there are a lot of schools within the US that are not taking IB credit. At least when my last daughter graduated in 2023, the AP classes, it was great. All of her AP exams were great. And she applied to 13 schools, and I want to say it was seven of them don't take her IP classes. And they're not, like, just crappy schools. So, it's just something to consider, the amount of time and effort and money we're putting into the IB program as to whether or not our children are going to be able to benefit from that as they leave and go off and apply to college.
Good evening, trustees. My name is Ruth Frere, and I'm a parent of three children in the district. Thank you for your presentation tonight. I think it is, a few, a few months ago, one of the trustees, no, I started this propaganda about IB, shared based on copy-paste from an unnamed website from a different state. And I was here, actually, several months ago, so I mentioned this in public comment. And ever since, of course, we've now heard the similar talking points coming from the audience and actually in some other places as well. One of, one of them made in a PTA meeting, including, for example, that how much is the ad costing for the Somers Record. So, I, for one, after hearing the, this information that was shared in the BOE meeting, was very happy to see the ad, the so-called ad, which I took as sharing accurate information about the program, which I think is really important because there's so much ignorance. The full-page ad in the Somers Record, now, I don't know how much the district paid, but it's about $1,200, or it was last year. I know because my husband ran for the BOE, and we looked into, into advertising. So, I don't know, it must be higher this year. Maybe the school got a, the district got a discount. I don't know. But if someone is not getting quality education here because of this ad, I'm, I'm happy to pay for that out of my own pocket, okay? I wouldn't want anyone to get disadvantaged in math or reading because of that. So, I just want to put that on the record, just so that everyone knows. Another thing is that I'm really sad at just how people are willing to advocate against programs because they think their children are not personally benefiting from it. But maybe some other children are benefiting from it. And this board has heard testimonies before from kids and parents about how they have benefited from it. You know, my kid doesn't benefit from special education programs. It doesn't mean that I'm against them. In fact, I'm very happy. I would like to speak without interruption because that's the polite and proper thing to do in a public space. Respect decorum. This is also maybe part of civic education. I don't know. I think that it's important that we accept that this is a diverse community and has diverse needs. And as a district, I'm very happy when the district tries to meet those different needs. I support that as a parent and as a taxpayer in this district. And I think that it's important, you know, my eldest son is, is going to enroll in IB. He's taking English, Spanish, history, math applications, and analysis, physics, and business. That's pretty-- That's pretty solid, I think. My middle son is most likely not going to. I don't think he's the type, and he's, I wouldn't recommend it to him. There are different kids with different needs. Why can't we all just accept that? Why can't we support each other? Why must people come to a meeting and shout and interrupt and speak over each other? I just don't understand it. I think as a community, we could do better than that. Thank you very much.
No other comments. We'll go on to board comment.
Yeah, I'm going to start. We, we got to meet our two new assistant principals. Terrific, terrific resumes, very excited for what you bring to the district. Welcome, very proud to approve that tonight. We, we had the opportunity to visit the high school recently, and we, we got a tour around a, a cross-section of, of different classes. We, we got in, we were presented with information about how things are taught at the school. And, and we saw IB classes, we saw AP classes, we saw regular classes. And, and I just want to thank the whole team for putting that together. It's never a small effort, but it is really a useful, valuable insight for us to see. We get to actually step in on classes, just be behind and watch the students as they're learning. And I will say, the, I was amazed at the interaction that, that the students had in the classes with each other. They, they really felt engaged with how they were being taught. You know, when we, we look at the IB program, there are, there are qualities of an IB learner that are just excellent qualities for, for all learners. And it, it seems to just bleed through to a lot that, that what was happening in the classes. The students are willing to take, take risks, they, they're reflective. And, and just talking to them also, a lot of great feedback about the confidence in the, in the growth that they seem to have. It, it's something I'm, I'm really proud of how that has developed and continues to develop here in the district. And I thank everyone, the whole team, for all of those efforts. Very proud of you. Thank you.
Yep. Congratulations to the, the new assistant principals. We got to meet them a couple of weeks back. And again, to reiterate on what Chad said, we did do the, the high school visit. Very informative and again, the interaction, very different from when I was in school. So, you know, it looks like the teachers and the programs did a good job and, you know, showed us a, you know, a different way that things have been going on since when I was there. So again, thank you for the staff that set that up.
Echo to that. I really like to listen to the parents about whatever opinion. I just noticed my email listed in the school board is the school email, but I don't use school email. That may be the reason I rarely get any email from parents. I now publicly can tell you, my email is ifaywellye@yahoo.com, or send me a message, whatever. I would love to discuss with anybody about curriculum, graduates, how they behave, to be, perform, okay? Thank you.
Pat, anything?
Yes. Congratulations to our newest members of the Tusker community. We went, met with them last week and they seem like great people. I want to thank all the parents, community members for coming out tonight to talk and speak and share their mind. Lastly, I would like to, I would like every parent, teacher, student, and community member to know that at any time, they can contact me and feel free to contact me whenever you feel necessary, things aren't getting addressed, or concerns, or problems, or things that you want to talk about that are good, you could always call me or email me. Promise there'll be no repercussions. And you can remain anonymous if you'd like, or give me a name if you would like to do so as well. But my phone's always on, my email's always open.
Just going to say, welcome to the new assistant principals. I appreciate everyone coming out tonight, and I appreciate the presentations that were provided. Thank you, Claire and Liz, especially for all those details. I'm not really sure why people think we're not teaching math and English and reading and everything else in the schools. Ironically, a large focus of, of the IB framework, and I'm talking, not the diploma program, I'm talking the NYPD piece of it and primary years piece of it, is experiential learning is very student-focused and actually really ties in with a lot of what we're already doing in our schools. I had the benefit of not only attending the high school with everyone last week who could make it, but I also have been on the primary years feasibility study where I attended, we visited two different schools and I attended with different teachers from the varying grade levels, K through five. And the teachers were energized and excited about what they saw. So it's not a matter of, you know, I think it's beyond college credits and it's a difference between a diploma program. So I think everyone should kind of understand the difference, and that was part of the purpose of taking out the ads, for instance, and communicating with our communicate, with our team and communicating with the public so they do have an understanding of what it is versus not. I also wanted to say that at our November 28th board meeting, we put out the professional development costs, and it, and it separated out the IB program professional development costs as well as the non-IB professional development costs over the years since 2018, 2019 budget. So if anyone wanted to go back and see archives and spend some time looking at that meeting, you can see a lot of the discussion that happened around that, not only just the slide deck, but you can actually watch the video. As well as our December 12th Board of Education meeting, we discussed the IB program and the alignment with the New York State curriculum so that people would have an understanding that IB itself is not a curriculum, it's not a, an, any kind of thing that's handed to us. This is completely designed by the teachers in alignment with New York State standards, just as they do now. It's just with a student-centered focus and a certain profile. And also to address lockdowns, I guess we can go through this again, but the system was changed over February. Obviously, nobody was happy that accidents did happen. I don't think anybody did it, I mean, we know nobody did it intentionally. In any event, this was addressed at several meetings and we talked about how the program was changed over February. So knock on wood, we won't have any more lockdowns on that. So, and we always listen, we're always taking notes, and that's why we're here. If there's something that can't be discussed in public because it's based on a student-specific situation or personnel situation, that's why there's email. I do check my board email, so it's, it's on there. And yeah, so I mean, that's, that's why we're here. And we give lengthy budget discussion, present, presentations, and we're always trying to get answers. And if you didn't get response to your emails, reach out again. Maybe something got lost in the junk. That's happened to us before too, so.
Great. Thank you. All right. Probably going to echo a lot of that, but yeah, again, congrats to the, the APs. Excited for you guys to join here. You know, there's been a lot of comments tonight, you know, again, appreciate everybody coming at, coming out here. One of the things we've tried to strive on for this year has been communication. As a board, that's been one of the focuses, we have put together a communication committee, right? We have put, you know, there's been stuff that the administration's been putting out, we said the newspaper articles, there's flyers, emails, there's this presentation here. We've updated a lot of people in the board, in board meetings, but a lot of the questions and comments are things that have been addressed in those topics there. What I would love to hear some feedback on to some people, right, is email the board with some suggestions on how else we can be communicating this information out or how better that could be coming out, right? Again, a lot of this stuff has been repeated, but again, I'm looking for feedback on what is absorbable and how people can see this in a consistent way so you have your answers. Again, you could still have concerns or questions about it, and please feel free to bring those up in this meeting here, but some of this stuff has been addressed in some board meetings here. Again, thank you very much for the math and ELS, ELA updates on that. Excited to hear about what's going on with the, the science of reading and all the effort there for the professional learning and seeing those scores go up.
I just want to note, I'll close out, that this Saturday, just after COVID, the district had worked with the Regeneron Westchester Science and Engineering Fair to have actually located here up in the district. So I think that's a nice kind of jewel to add to the district crown. So we have this Saturday at the high school, we have approximately 725 kids coming from all over the region to go ahead and do those science presentation. Obviously, some of our students are in there with about 500 scientists, professors coming forth to be the judges in that. It is open to the public, 3:30 to 4:30, kind of come and see after the competition is kind of winding down. But again, I would remiss not to acknowledge Dr. Malia, our science lead-in here from the get-go to help us get this project going, as well as our custodial team and all the members that kind of hands-on, on deck to make this happen, to have that number of kids. We estimate about 4,500 people will be floating through our schools this weekend for the science. And then we have a rather large share-out next week as far as we also host the ceremony events. So again, a nice, a nice piece for the district. So thank you.
All right. We'll close the meeting. Let it be resolved that this special meeting workshop with the Board of Education be adjourned.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.